Start over again. Planning Commission meeting in order, please stand for the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Chris Hultunin.
Here.
Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesling, here.
Wayne Tornow.
Absent, excused.
Kathy Schweickert.
Here.
And Margie Ferris.
Here.
Thank you. Item number four, approval slash amendments to the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow is absent. Kathy Schweickert.
Yes.
And Margie Ferris.
You need to abstain then.
I abstain.
Thank you. Item number five, approval of minutes of June 26, 2024. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 26, 2024, planning commission meeting as submitted.
Support.
Any discussion?
Was that Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Mary Nun, roll call, please.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
I recuse myself, I was not here.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow is absent. Kathy Schweickert.
Yes.
And Margie Ferris.
I abstain myself as well.
All right, thank you. Item number six is new business. We have two items under new business. The first one is 6A, which is related to 1876 Fruit Road, which is a re-occupancy for a vitamin manufacturing business. Karen. Karen's our plan.
Tonight we have a site plan review for 1876 Fruit Street. This is a re-occupancy review. When a property has, oh, whenever a property is determined to be vacant or vacated or new, special land use for what's required, we're going to do a planning mission for a full site plan review for a re-occupancy. So this is a permitted use. The applicant for the new tenant is going to be using the industrial facility for a supply manufacturer, but because it's been vacant for so long, we have to report a site plan commission, so it's going to be re-occupied. The property meets the standards for the light industrial district in terms of how the building occupies the site, the landscaping, and as well as the parking. The only concern I had was that the current aerials of the property show that there's been additional paving and parking spaces. However, that's not being reflected on their site plan. Their site plan seems to match what they originally submitted in 2015, but there's additional parking in the northeast corner. It doesn't affect the number of parking spaces or handicap spaces, however, it does contribute a site plan that should reflect what's actually on site. Other than that, I do recommend approval of the re-occupancy so long as the site plan can be updated for the township records to reflect appropriate parking spaces. Or if there is plans to return that area to gravel as what was previously intended, just make that confirmation.
Is that your comment on a recommendation, the rear parking area concern? Is that what you're speaking of right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do recommend approval for re-occupancy.
I just want-
So long as that area, whether it's confirmed, yes, it's going to be gravel.
Sure.
Or if there isn't any additional-
I just want a clarification for myself, I'm sorry. Thank you, Karen, appreciate it.
It looks like you touched on the landscape and the lighting also in your recommendation.
I did a revised copy.
Oh, okay.
On August 19th, I don't know if that's in your packet.
Okay.
But basically, they confirmed there's no changes to the original plan we had with the plan staff 2015.
Okay.
So I wasn't sure if there was going to be any updates on that, and I confirm there's no proposed updates for plant station or lighting, so.
I believe they left the updated one for us. Either that or we did get an email from Karen.
Yeah, we got it.
We're Karen's updated.
That's this one.
There you go.
Okay. It was here.
There's a lot of paperwork in this packet.
That makes sense.
Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant here or representative of the applicant?
Well, here it is right there.
So for 1876 Fruit Street, anyone here on behalf of the applicant at all? I see no one raising their hand or coming forward. Gary, do you have anything you'd like to add to this? Please help us out.
Myself and Chief Rose did have an opportunity to do a walkthrough on this property, make sure it needed to go to this board to begin with. And there were some issues on the interior of the property. The outside looked fine. They'll be probably having about 10 or 12 employees. That'll max out what they need to do what they're doing over there right now. If you look at the site floor plan on it, it's pretty extensive, but a lot of that is just holding the chemicals or the supplements. There is some things that we need them to do on the interior, and we'll work through that once we see if the board will approve the reuse. And we'll talk about fire extinguishers, handicap parking. There is a compressor room there that needs to be finished inside. They did provide a floor plan. Other than that, everything in this as far as the building department is concerned, it is good.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate that. So do board members have any questions of either Karen and/or Gary?
I don't know much about a vitamin plant, you know, I don't know what goes in.
Okay, do we have an updated site plan in this packet at this point?
They submitted a site plan, I mean, it should be dated at least July, sort of August 2024.
And did you review, you reviewed that?
Yeah, I reviewed it.
But we don't have the answer to that question about the-
They submitted showing the parking that area-
Previous.
-that's still gravel, the same as it was in the 2015 plan. So if they're returning it to that, it's fine. If there is parking, it should just be reflected. And unfortunately, we don't have the applicant here to confirm what's going on. Because it's possible they're going to gravel there, but we don't know.
Have you had any contact verbally with the applicant?
No.
Gary, have you?
Yeah, just during that walkthrough.
Okay.
And the parking in the back there, whereas yes, it's different from 2015, and somewhere between 2015 and today, they resurface that parking back there. The parking lot is in good shape. I can't imagine them changing that or really even needing that number of parking spaces for the operation that they're going to be doing. So I would say it's most likely that they would not be turning that back to gravel, that they would keep the parking as it is, the surface as it is, even though they don't need it to utilize the other parking spaces.
Thank you, Gary.
So, question. So would it be appropriate to recommend or approve the re-occupancy based on an approved site plan being submitted to building?
I'd be comfortable with that.
An updated site plan, just so that we don't-
An updated site plan that reflects the current-
Current parking?
Yeah.
Just so that we don't hold them up if they need to go on. I mean, we could table it, but then that puts them out another month, and I don't think it'd be necessary, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that, Gary? Did the fire, excuse me, did the fire department walk through this facility with you, Gary?
Absolutely, yeah.
Any write-ups, any feedback on him?
Absolutely. You know, we walked through it together. His input was obviously fire safety. We called out two areas. One was this compressor room that needs to be finished with type X drywall to stop any type of flame spread. The second thing that we called out through Chief Rose was the fire extinguisher location and all the emergency lighting. All of that was checked out on that day. Everything turned out good. Building's in good shape.
Did the applicant give you any idea what kind of storage he'll have as far as flammable materials or hazardous?
Correct. Yeah, those were questions that I had as far as, you know, high house storage and do we have to worry about sprinklers and that sort of thing. What product they use and the process they use is not done with any toxic chemicals or any chemicals that fire chief was concerned with. And what they submitted seemed to be just vitamins. So as far as storage in effect, they will have some storage, but pretty much they'll process the pills. They will be housed in there and then quickly distributed. So I don't think we have any long-term storage that'll be taking place inside.
Thank you.
Any other board questions?
A motion to approve the re-occupancy request at 1876 Fruit Road contingent on providing the building department an updated site plan reflecting the current parking situation.
One second, Beth.
So we have a motion and a second.
Sue, do you have the motion?
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All right, roll call, please. Hold on. Karen, is this a recommendation to the township board or is this strictly for us to take care of?
Oh, I'm going to be, uh-
I think it's just us, that's put-
You're right.
Okay, thank you. If we're not, somebody will tell us, I'm sure.
Deborah Addy.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Chris Hultunin.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornow is absent. Kathy Schweickert.
Yes.
And Maggie Ferris.
Yes.
And Margaret. Sorry.
We'll get your name right eventually.
I like Maggie.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Should you be going last?
I should be, I'm not sure why I got-
That's the way.
It's the way I just got printed up.
I got printed up.
We'll correct it next time, and on the next go-around, we'll just do it that way. In case there's a tie, I get to be the tiebreaker.
Right.
So, doesn't always happen that way, but that's okay. All righty, thank you, Sue. Okay, we're going to move on to item 6B, which is the 8101 McComb Road, parcel number Site plan review of cellular communications facility. Karen.
The applicant is proposing construct of cellular communication facility with power and ground facilities at this site. The closed power facility should be newly constructed facility and considered a location as well according to the township requirements. Closed power would be 250 feet height monocle and ground facilities, so consists of floor and ground spaces, an access drive, full box and transformer, a gate, utility H-frame structure and signage. The facility would be located at the southern portion of the property west of the center. Soing would be good to unmanned, but technicians are visiting and tracks them at one point. No standards for local water or fresh water required. The applicant indicates that the facility will not generate noise above 50 decibels at the property lines. Regulations for cell communication facilities can be found in section 2052, which I'll go over a little bit. So it's supposed to meet all the Electronic Industries Association, Communication Industries Association standards for steel antenna towers and antenna supporting structures. It's supposed to meet the federal aviation and administration requirements. The only signage that will be on there is having to be for advertising purposes. It will show service providers are and provide contact information for emergency situations. The property has been rezoned to I-1 in the spring of 2014 and is 5.20 acres. The applicant did receive a variance for the tower height to be 250 feet as well as variance for reduced setbacks for the south property line, and setbacks for the north and west east. The applicant is providing a re-belt that is 15 feet wide and consists of five chain trees, seven ornamental trees, plenty of every tree, and 35 deciduous shrubs and a six-foot hyper every 100 feet. There'll also be a six-foot height chain fence as well as no trespass passing signs and contact information is also going to be posted as well as in case there's an emergency. Construction will be of a monocle design. This tower is replacing a decommissioned tower that is adjacent to this property, but however, it's not on the same property. So again, everything we're reviewing is for a new service tower and not a replacement service tower. The, at the time of my original review, we were waiting for information on whether the tower, to confirm that the tower wouldn't have a shiny metallic finish. The applicant has since provided information on the finished of the tower. It'll be of a galvanized steel material, so they'll develop a casino over time as well. So it should not be reflected, but should be seen on the square. The applicant says that T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Verizon are going to be utilizing this The applicant has provided additional information to, additional information, more information to meet all the city ordinance. This ordinance for words communication facilities is a bit old and it may have some language that may not work with how the industry, or I shouldn't say work, may not necessarily be applicable to how the industry currently works. For instance, there's a provision that says the owner, operator of the tower requires ten statements that all dispute with key providers concerning co-location at the time and terms and conditions of co-location, so be submitted through a commercial operator or system selected by parties, but if party very unable to agree, then under the OSS vices, the commercial arbitration provisions of the American Arbitration Association. Definitely provided letter saying that they're going to work with their customers on any issues that might arise. You know, I think the intent of language like this was to ensure that you build a tower for Verizon, you and Verizon can dispute Verizon decides, I'm going to leave you and try to build another tower off the ownership. I don't think that's how the industry necessarily works these days. I think that was the intention of this. This ordinance is very old and probably should be something that the planning commission reviews in the future and thinks about updating some of this language. The applicant is also in the process of posting, providing a security bond with the townships. Those projections are happening. The applicant has also provided a letter stating how should the tower ever collapse and what manner it would do so, and that was stamped by a commissioner. Based on what has been submitted, I do recommend approval of the post-site plan set up to comply with township building and engineering requirements.
Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, my name is Larry Opleski and I represent the applicant, America Tower.
Anything else you'd like to add to what we have in front of us?
I think Ms. LeBeere did a better job than I could summing all this up. It's been kind of a long road to get here, but I'm very appreciative of township staff they've been just delightful to work with. We've been in pretty much constant communication, trying to make sure we satisfy all the ordinance requirements. It's my understanding that if you do satisfy those under the ordinance, I would just ask that you revise site plan this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Karen. On the letter, could you go over and read page six, first paragraph on that, please?
Which letter?
Which letter?
Second paragraph.
Which letter? Item number two.
That'd be the first letter in the list of letters.
Hold on.
Talk about the review.
Are you referring to the review or a letter that we received from Karen's review letter?
No.
You see what you're talking about?
It's from, it's from the applicant.
McComb letter, do you have?
Yeah, I think that's it. Yeah, it's from the applicant.
Do you want to read it? If you've got it in front of you, Mark?
Next.
Is it the letter of July 16th?
Well, I was just going to ask Karen if, in fact, all of that that he says in page six on the second paragraph is true. Denial of this tower would violate the Federal Communications Act. That's the headline.
I see it.
Yeah, page six.
Page seven.
Oh, I read that, yeah. Okay, gotcha.
All right.
Thank you.
You have any comment on that, Karen?
I would say that would probably, our township attorney would be better able to answer that, and I do not completely, I'm not as versed in the federal communications act.
So no comment?
She commented as best as she could.
From this letter that's from the attorneys dated June 19th, on page seven.
Yeah.
It says at the very bottom, denial of the tower would create an illegal coverage gap, an illegal coverage gap, and would therefore violate Federal Trade Communications Act. So that's the answer there.
Any other comments, questions from?
I have a question. I just want to make sure, because everything I'm seeing that has this address also has Elginak, Michigan on it.
I can maybe answer that question for you, because I spoke with Amber, because it's, Christine's right, there's Elginak everywhere.
We're Clay Township, we're not Elginak.
We're not, yeah. So she, through her office, had requested numerous times for a correction. Basically, we need to follow the, our application shows the parcel number, so whatever motion we were to make, please.
The site plan shows Elginak.
And may I interject you something?
Sure.
Google Maps has it as Marine City.
It covered it all, so.
Patrick.
Thus, I think that's why Amber, after speaking with her, suggested, you know, parcel number is correct, whether it's Clay, Elginak, Marine City, that's where we're at.
My concern is the site plan has Elginak on it, and I do not see a parcel number.
Yeah.
Would the applicant be able to point us if there's a parcel number located anywhere here?
Yeah, it's on the page at the end there.
Got it? Oh, thank you, Robert.
Any other board questions, comments?
Yeah, I've got another question.
Sure.
The proposed site, I'm looking at this on one of the letters, it's from you guys, it's outlined in red, four X's on it, Starville Anglin Road. See that? I'll show it to you here, I'll show it. So in this area, where is the tower going to be?
So, yeah, we have, I'm not sure what that's from, but what this gentleman has right here is where it's going to be.
Okay, so we're looking at, there's that road there. Okay. All right. Okay, being familiar with that area and, all right, cancel that, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, if I could just-
Sure.
So there were a couple of questions asked about the Telecommunications Act earlier. So where we are at in the process, and Karen, I'll hear you correct me if I missed anything, is the rezoning is approved, so it's a permitted use here. The variances are approved, so it's, you know, the setbacks and the heights are approved. At this point, it's just, you know, have we satisfied the ordinance requirements for the site plan? So there's really, I don't really see anywhere in the ordinance where there's additional things that we need to do. At this point, certainly, I'm happy to hear that if the commission so decides, but I'm just-
I appreciate your comments, we're just discussing this because it's been in front of us before, and I also, along with the rest of the planning commission members tonight, received a, I don't know, have you seen this? What a-
I have not seen that.
Okay. Apparently, there's one located at 22 and North Avenue.
That looks like a fake tree.
Right.
Charlie Brown Christmas tree.
It does, but apparently it's a cell, it's a cell tower. So if there's going to be a cell tower, we already discussed with Karen whether it's going to be shiny material or oxidized, whatever the other term is. Is this another option?
I have seen those.
Okay.
In my opinion, the times that those do get put in, they usually make the community a lot angrier than just a regular cell tower, because they tend to look a bit cartoonish, in my opinion. The finish that's going to be on the tower, this new tower, is actually going to be coated with the material to make it even duller than the tower that's there. So if the finish being shiny or not shiny is a concern, this tower will be an improvement upon the existing tower.
Okay. But your company personally has not seen, or done something like this?
I mean, they do towers all over the world, so I wouldn't want to kick out of school and say they've never done something like that.
Okay. But you're not familiar with this one, that's at North Avenue?
I'm just hearing about this.
Okay. That's fair.
I don't have one for you on that.
That's fair. Any other questions, comments, concerns? This is not a public hearing, so I'm not really allowed to let anybody else, other than the- than the applicant and our planner.
How many neighbors are around that tower?
I don't know.
There's a few, there was quite a few here complaining about it last month.
I'm sorry?
The last public meeting, there was quite a few people complaining about it.
At our public hearing, there was.
That was for the rezoning.
Yes.
Yeah, for the rezoning.
Yes.
This is...
Which we denied.
We recommended for denial.
Right.
And then...
And they came back with the, with this.
Right. And with that, since we're on that topic, in our packet was from, so we made that original recommendation, and that went to Metropolitan Planning Commission, and it's included in our packet. Their Metropolitan Planning Commission staff recommended approval of the rezoning and disagreed with the town, with us, Planning Commission, and suggested, their staff suggested that the township, which coincides with what Karen just told us, that maybe we need to add a section to our zoning ordinance that provides a process and a list of procedures for conditional rezonings, which this is, or this. So I know it is in our packet, but there was a lot of material, so I just bring that to everybody's attention, okay? Anything else you want to add, Karen?
I do know without a tower in that area, that's pretty dead.
Say what?
That's a dead zone out there without any, without a tower.
Well, yeah.
Well, I think at this point...
People don't have, they don't have, there's no landline.
That's actually not even the concern at this point. This, at this point, is, it's going in, it doesn't meet, you know, the appearance, all that good stuff.
So the, the site plan was adjusted from the original one that we saw because the height. So the, the only setback, the ZBA approved a variance on the south lot line, and that piece of property is currently owned by the same owner, correct?
Correct, is my understanding. I don't know if I'm wrong, Karen.
So those are still two separate parcels, and only one of them is zoned industrial, well, conditionally rezoned industrial. So I guess, I mean, I don't know what happens to the other parcel if somebody wanted to sell that and build on it. There's a variance in place for that tower, so is that piece of property still potentially able to be sold and built on? And then a tower is looming 96 feet from that property line?
Well, may I say, I've done a couple of these towers at my own job. And typically, a lot of times, they'll lease, lease the land.
Yep.
And/or own it. But the owner of the property gets a nice income.
Oh, yeah.
So it wouldn't surprise me that if they still are owners.
Who owns the property?
Vistason, I believe.
That's a question. I did see that, I thought you guys owned it.
No.
Yeah, Mr. Vistason owns the property, we just have a lease.
Yeah.
To answer your question, he does own the other parcels.
Yeah, I figured he owned that one. I just, I wasn't sure what the...
And to cross the road.
There's nothing tying those parcels together, but now we have a lot line that's going to be very, or a, I'm sorry, a setback that could be very tight if that were ever developed again.
Yeah, I mean, the variance would run with the land, as you say.
Right.
I'm not sure what his plans are going to be for parcels in the future.
I guess I would have just been more comfortable seeing those lots combined and the whole piece be utilized for the tower, but that's not for us to...
That's not normal when they do it.
And it's not for us to decide.
Right, it's not, that's just personal opinion.
Yeah, personal opinions are great, that's fine. So, special opinion is fine. So. Any more questions for applicant, or Karen, or Gary? Do you have anything to add to this?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else? Anyone want to make a motion? Pretty quiet here. Well, we have to address this one way or the other. We're done with the public hearing. It may not be what we were looking to do. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for parcel 74-14-030-20001-000.
Okay. So we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Debbie Addy, sue, you're all set. Bring your motion. Roll call, please.
Deborah Addy?
Yes.
Mark Barchard?
No.
Chris Hultunin?
No.
Christine Holcomb?
No.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesling, yes. Wayne Tornal is absent. Margie Ferris?
Yes.
And Kathy Schweigert?
Yes.
So motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right. Yes with a regretting yes.
Yeah.
If I can add it, but I don't think it makes a difference, but regretting yes. All right, on to item number seven, which is unfinished business. We don't have anything listed unless Karen or somebody else been, no? All right, then we're going to go on to item number eight, which is planning consultant report. Karen? Okay.
We do need to stamp though, so.
Oh, sir, just a minute, hold on. We do, actually have, we need to stamp these.
Some approvals.
Yes.
I think so.
We need three, so you, you got three.
We got three skips over here.
Thank you. We're going to need you to sign also.
Do I do that now or after the meeting?
Right now.
Okay.
Here you go. Pen, that's up.
All right, so right here?
Yep, well, it says yep. And then you need to keep one and the other two stay with the township.
Shouldn't.
Never done this before.
We'll try to do this.
I appreciate the UMC.
There you go.
When, what do you think you're going to be looking at construction?
I know that, I'm told that it's ASAP. I'm not involved in that part of it, but I imagine weather permitting, it would be as soon as possible.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you for pointing it out.
When does the other one come down?
So item number nine is ZBA representative's report. So you were at the last meeting.
At yours?
You know, ZBA.
No, I couldn't be.
And you couldn't be, so.
I could have been in the audience.
That's, that's correct. But we got Gary, so we're going to let Gary do that. Thank you for standing up, Gary.
You knew I was there.
I know, I wanted to make sure I wasn't overstepping here.
Congratulations on your reelection.
All really having to do with the same lot. This property on Colony Drive, a little larger lot, it's about 125 feet, and they went in for a lot split because our minimum standard is 65. It ended up breaking down to 62 and some change for each lot. So that split was approved, and then the next was for setbacks on both properties. They were asking for five foot and five foot three on either side, a total of 10 foot, three inch setbacks on both of those properties, and those were granted.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to go on to item number 10, which is board representatives' report, which is Mark.
Okay, thank you. We had a board meeting at, at Harson's Island this past Monday, and what would you like to hear? IRA agreement, lease hiring resolutions, or would you like to hear that Maggie is coming to the play?
We can't figure that one out.
That's all I have, thank you.
Just don't say Marge.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mark. Okay, number 11 is chairperson's report. So first of all, I want to welcome Margie.
Excuse me.
Margie, thank you very much. And there was, yeah, there was like, it's the last board meeting, board of trustees meeting. So with that being said, what I would like next to do is, because Christopher Daggie had been our ZBA rep from this board to the ZBA, we now need to appoint somebody to the ZBA. So who would be interested in doing that position?
I'd motion to appoint Margie to the ZBA, since she has some experience.
Sounds wonderful to me. Do you accept?
I accept, yeah, I accept.
Okay.
I was fired last week.
Well, I thought that was kind of a rude word, but anyway, because I did talk to Ari before they had...
You were fired and hired.
Yeah, I know.
Like, okay.
I would have used something a little gentler than that, but because it was in, that was an amendment to the board of trustees' agenda for that evening. So they called and I said, that's whatever, works, which, then you had a meeting on Wednesday that you couldn't attend, so.
I couldn't be on the board for that.
No.
I said I would have, he says, you know, someone might not like.
No, I consulted our legal for the township and that definitely cannot happen. We needed to do it at this forum. So this is what we're doing today. So if everybody's okay with Margie, say yes.
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 Anybody not? Congratulations, you're good. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, item number, oh, one other thing. I was talking to Brian Trappo, who is the chair of ZBA. And we've done this in the past years, getting together with ZBA, our board, and the board of trustees. So it appears that next month in September, we don't have anything on our calendar, so we're going to try to do a workshop. And so look for some notification for that, and whoever can attend, that way we can do like we've done in the past, just, you know, talk about different things that have come before, before the ZBA. You know, I think we've all been to classes, wherever it's come to the ZBA, you know, three times or more, maybe that's an ordinance we need to revisit. Hopefully, Karen, you can attend with that. Gary, I'm hoping you're going to be able to attend. As many people as we can get, that'd be great. I know there's other ordinances that maybe need some fine tuning, and we have a master plan, and all that stuff that needs to be revisited. So maybe we can, with that meeting in September, get an idea where we're heading, how's that sound, okay? And there's always, there's in Grand Rapids, the convention is going to happen in September. If anybody's interested, contact the township and see if they'll manage to pitch up for a couple of days and take classes, okay?
Where's that?
Here, where's mine? There you go.
Coming up pretty quick.
Grand Rapids, yeah. I don't know if you got one of those on that.
Oh, I did. It's, it's like tomorrow, right? It was something like that, it's the 28th?
September.
Oh, September.
September. Not, not on, it's September.
Maybe today, yeah.
Oh, September, I see.
September.
I was looking at this.
No, you're okay. All right, I'm going to move on to item number 12, which is planning commission members' comments.
The only thing I had, you touched on it once, but maybe, should we task Karen with looking at that tower ordinance, just because it's fresh?
Yes, we have talked about it before, and if, okay. I believe if it's okay with the township board, because there might be an additional cost that I don't know about, then Karen would be able to communicate with the board. Is that okay?
Maybe that's something we talk about next month.
Yeah.
If she has time and she happens to be on the phone and can relay that, give that, give Ari a heads up, because I talked to Ari that we were going to try to do this combined board.
Just so it's fresh, we'll probably never see it again, but somebody will, down the line, yeah. They'll be 500 foot tall by then, so.
Yeah, kidding. Okay, what's one in the sky that you don't even need to tell us?
I kind of think you just have one in the sky, it'll be just...
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll be done, so.
More towers.
Sterling.
Sterling, thank you, that's what I was thinking.
That's all I got.
That's all you got? How about you, Robert? You have something fine, if not, no big deal.
No, I mean, that's, pretty much, I don't know. I don't like the way this went down. I mean, that's, we had to watch what we do, because if we denied that, it'd probably end up with a lawsuit.
Thus, my comment after the fact, which makes me ask, but with reservation, so that's where I, I went. I think we have to explain how we vote, but that's, I did what I did.
I mean, that's why I made the motion, because that's, if, if it wouldn't have been made and it were denied, it would, this would have...
Probably.
It would have cost the township a lot of money.
Yep. So we don't have to like it, but here we are. We tried to do...
Yeah.
We did it in, was it February when it first came in front of us, so we can...
Well, I just think there was other places that it could have gone. There's...
They had some maps that showed other places they could look at.
Yeah, that's the issue. The cover of...
And as far as this goes, if we would have done something when we, back in February, then we could have probably have pushed the...
I don't know if we could have.
We could have probably have put, recommended an approval with something like that to the board, but as far as like now, it's just gone.
Well, it's something we need to look at when we, if we're going to redo that ordinance.
My brother lives in Clay, and they had brought the electricity and everything, poured the pad, and they decommissioned it. And so it could have gone there, and he's on 35 acres. It could have been at the way far end, and it bordered the DNR property.
There was something in our pack, our packet that they reached out to a couple different other areas, like Sumpco or whatever, no one else.
He didn't call him. He would have said, yes, absolutely. He's like, I don't know why they didn't bring it here. The electricity was just brought there and everything.
I don't know. Here we are, so.
So it is kind of double edged sword here.
Appreciate your comments, so, for sure. How about you, Chris?
Got a big Labor Day weekend coming up, just my Harson's Island Public Service announcement. Lions have their turkey shoot this weekend. Start Saturday with the Antique Boat Parade at 10 o'clock down the South Channel, followed by the 11 o'clock Margaritaville Street Party. And then continuing on at the Lions, located on La Croix, trap shooting, kids' games, bingo, cornhole, food, drinks, entertainment. So if you get a chance, support the Lions. Also on Sunday, the Harson's Island firefighters are doing their annual pancake breakfast at 8 o'clock. It's a good breakfast and a good, good reason to support. And then while you're there, take a look at the new Welcome to San Souci sign, which just went up yesterday. It's beautiful. We did a lot of, SS Downtown East did a lot of fundraising, had a lot of donors and supporters, worked in collaboration with the township for ARPA fund usage and split the costs, and had a lot of help with the Lions and the fire chief and his men. So we're, we're very grateful for that. San Souci Bar will be having specials this weekend, Bloody Marys and barbecue on the island. So if you get a chance, stop in for some good libations in food. And on the 14th, Hiskva will have their annual ball, uh, ball, annual ball, their annual bonfire at Brown's Field, and it'll be in conjunction with Music in the Park. Better Brad's BBQ, they'll have beer and seltzer for sale, and I believe it's $25 a ticket. And then on September 28th, Elginak has the bump and run championship. So lots of stuff coming up, lots of good stuff.
You missed one. Elginak Lions Club Art Fair, we've taken it over.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's, Labor Day weekend, two days.
Oh, the art fair, that's right. Anything else you all said?
I'm done.
It's all kinds of fun stuff. I didn't lose power.
That's good. That's a positive.
We lost cable.
I didn't lose cable or power.
How about you, Debbie? Mark? You already said you too, so that's good. Tom?
I'm good.
You're good. All right, we're going to go on to item number 13, which is public comments. If anybody in the public would like to come forward to the podium and speak, now's your time. I'll ask one more time. Anybody in the public like to come forward? I don't see anybody rushing up to the podium, so I'm going to take that as a no. So this is the favorite part of this agenda, Mark. We're going on to item number 14. Arrangement?
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone. You have a great Labor Day weekend.